Well, maybe tomorrow night you'll be less busy. I mean, you'll be less busy than tonight, I would assume. How is it at home? I was, I've been thinking about that every day. I was like, huh? I wonder how that's gone. Has it gotten better?
It's been quiet.
It's a hard, yeah.
It's very quiet now.
Oh, well, I'm not gonna spread your gossip, but it's like, I saw you change your profile picture.
I did?
Or did you not?
No.
Okay, maybe you didn't.
I know.
I just noticed it was just you and Andy.
Oh. Oh, I did that a couple of years ago.
Okay. Yeah, I saw you posted one of the pages.
All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Iyani City Council the order if we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. Doing roll call, we have all council members present. Is there any public comment this evening? All right, we'll move on to adopting the agenda. Any modifications?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are no agenda modifications.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to G one, the September third, twenty twenty four city council meeting minutes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. For announcements, we've got our park and recreation board meeting coming up on Tuesday, September twenty fourth at six P M. We've got our city council meeting on Tuesday, October first at seven P M. And an E D A meeting on Tuesday, October twenty first immediately following the city council meeting. Do we have any council committee reports?
I have a fairly substantial one today, so I spent all day today down in St. Paul voting on state policy recommendations through L M C. Um, there's some good news, but unfortunately more bad news. Many government subsidized housing bills were passed, which basically means our taxes are gonna go up again for government subsidized housing. Which, I mean, obviously, it's good to have some of that, but some of the policies that they pushed through were pretty silly. And I think it'll be a, have a pretty poor effect on housing. They're kind of doing things that actually make the housing more difficult. So one example was the, uh, the TIF funding to, just basically, if you have a TIF-funded apartment, you have to meet a certain quota. So now they want to increase that. So you have, if you have a, I, I don't know exactly how to explain it that makes sense, but basically what they're doing is they're pushing all these TIF subsidized units into these apartments. And in order to offset that, the average cost of the other apartments has to go up in the same building. So if you are subsidizing a five hundred dollar apartment, somebody has to pay the difference in that. So the average has to average out. So they're getting, these, these units are getting overwhelmed with lower income and they're not able to fill the higher income spots because nobody wants to live in an apartment building that has lower income people in it. So it's, it's, they're kind of shooting themselves in the foot and I, I'm, I'm pretty disappointed with that, but not much you can really do other than voice your opinion on that. Uh, one thing that was really good-
Well, what was, what, were you talking about that the league was gonna be advocating for that policy, you're saying?
Yes, so they're advocating to have more of a, uh, I don't remember the word they use, but it's the TIF funding stuff. And basically, if you have a five hundred dollar unit in there, the cost of that has to average out in the whole total apartment complex. So if you have a five hundred dollar unit and the market price is a thousand dollars, you have to have a fifteen hundred dollar unit to offset that cost. Well, nobody's going to move in and pay fifteen hundred dollars when there's people there moving, they're paying five hundred dollars. So it's kind of like a, they're trying to fill these, these apartments, but then they're not filling them. So it's, you see it in White Bear Lake. Uh, my girlfriend lives in one right now where they brought in TIF funding, um, for these apartment comp, these apartment units, but the other units are all sitting empty because all these people are moving out because the, the, it's becoming less safe to live there. And you see that you're actually having units that are half fill, half filled, you're losing, um, housing for these people. And it's just not a, it's not, it hasn't been well done. Um, I probably explained that really poorly. But that's something that I would like to fight for more next year down there. Uh, there were some good things that were changed. Um, if you remember a couple of years back, the state kind of took away some daycare options to have in-home daycares and H O As. So that has been recommended to repeal those and that passed today unanimously, I believe, which was good. That means that more, there'll be more local control on daycares.
I just wanted to kind of clarify what you're talking about, so everybody knows in the audience is just basically, you attended Le, League of Minnesota's cities meetings-
Yes.
That are policy meetings where they're trying to come up with policy and their platforms for what they're gonna advocate for at the legislature. So this is not anything that's being passed that the city is held to or were obligated to participate in or anything like that. You're just talking about as a lobbyist that works for the city in these policy meetings is what you're talking about. So it's nothing that-
Yep.
affects the city on a, on what decisions we're able to make, but it's, it's, we're part of that group and we're trying to, to advocate for things that we find valuable and, and, advocate against things that we disagree with at the league. So-
Right.
But this is not stuff that affects us in the city of Iyani necessarily.
Yeah, I didn't really-
Today or anything like that, so.
Didn't really explain that well. I had meetings today from nine and I had like fifteen minutes to try and prep a committee report, so it was a little bit of a struggle today. It was long. There is another greenhouse gas emissions tax, uh, that was unfortunately recommended for approval today on highways. So that means that highway projects are going to be charged, for per mile greenhouse gas tax, which is going to increase the price of construction projects on highways, which is obviously going to affect everybody. Um, and I, I was pretty opposed to that, but I believe there's only two or three other people in the room that were. Obviously, the, the going green sounds good, uh, but they have a lot of work to do on how they decide where those funds go. And then in the H R committee policy board, I did fight for one thing that I thought, uh, was actually one good thing that came out of COVID was that city council members and city staff could attend virtually. Now, we've had a couple of instances here in the city where we had four people here to vote and we wished that fifth person was here, you know, to give their opinion on things. Um, and I think the fact that, uh, you could vote virtually was a, a, a big deal. Um, so I fought for that today. Initially, when we started discussing that, the room seemed to be, um, against city council members having that option. But then after, you know, probably ten or fifteen minutes about talking about the positives of it, um, the votes in the room kind of changed. And then I had recommended proposing a, like-
Say, I think there's stories out of a certain neighboring county, I think, where they've got a commissioner who spends an awful lot of time down in Florida and they-
That's-
President at meetings and-
And that's one thing that I-
That is an issue, I think that, so I don't know.
That's one thing that I had talked about. So the, the overarching, um, policy recommendation that we made today, I voted against that actual aspect of it for that reason. Um, I recommended a twenty-five percent maximum usage. But the, the league, uh, the voting members didn't feel that was our place to say that percentage. They thought that the state legislature should make the final call on that. But I pushed for a smaller number because, you know, obviously, stuff happens, or if you have a vacation once a year and it happens to land on a council, date, you, you should have the option to, you know, call in and be, you know, give input because that's what we're here for. Uh, so there may be some revisions there that the state senators do, um, but I think that was a, a pretty good win. And it really leaves the option open for smaller cities. There are actually a few of them in the room that had had issues with it in the past, and that's kind of why it was brought to light. And, uh, I think it's just good for all of us to be able to, uh, give our opinion, even if we're not here necessarily in the room. Um, school board and chamber of commerce meet this week, so I'll have those. And I think I'm going to, uh, look through my notes from the L M C today and maybe give a, a better report because these are very unorganized. Yep. Correct. And they want to raise that. That was, that was what was proposed today, is raising that and that, that passed, so. Correct.
I think we did years ago, across Riverbanks on Main Street, of apartment buildings. I think that was TIF money in there, but that was years ago and I think that was before that.
Yeah, I just think it's relevant.
I just don't, TIF money is used for certain things.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a lot of good things that TIF money can come into in effect. I just, if you're gonna build an apartment personally, if you're gonna build an apartment, you should have the money to build your apartment. And I shouldn't, I shouldn't be on the track here to build that apartment.
Yep, and that's-
My personal thing. And that, that was one of the biggest things about the one I always began, I always, uh, weighing in Delaware, but that's Texas, we called it. That was one of the big things they always thought. We did not give them any money to build a little apartment, zero, zero dollars. All we did was put it on the building. So they did not have to have that a big effect on them.
Right, but at the end of the day, it affects all of us because we all pay taxes on that sort of subsidized housing and they're, I think they're making their problem worse than they are better. So there was, there was a couple of people that were, um, fighting for that, but unfortunately, it didn't pan out the way that some of us may have hoped it would have. But it's good to have the conversations. There's a lot of good conversation today and it's great to be down there and, you know, be able to hear these things and, and come back to the city and get input from citizens on things like this and, you know, just fight for what your citizens want. So I think it's a great, it's a great thing to go down there and do that. And I hope we continue it no matter who's on council.
Like I said, none of that is applying to the city. It's talking about League of Minnesota cities and what they're lobbying for, so. And there was no, no section eight housing brought into town, right? So, so Steve, I'll clarify that for you. You said it, you said it too, but I really wanna, really wanna hammer that home. So, okay, any other council committee reports?
I got one. Uh, my community education, uh, meeting started up again through the school. And they had, one of the highlights was over the summer, they have three sports that really spiked an interest. And they were pickleball, basketball, and volleyball. So we're here talking about pickleball and adding courts. Well, that's one of the big increases over the summer through the school district. And then they got their audit, their audit back from last year and they came in thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-six dollars under budget, so. That's good. That's about it, though.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other council committee reports? All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to our first item of business, which is K one ordinance to consider mending zoning code to add open sales lot for custom trailers as permitted use, as a permitted use in the I one industrial district.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this is a request by Tab and Slot originally, which was, um, at the previous planning commission meeting, which they originally requested for permitted use, but, um, after discussions with the planning commission is recommended that it'll move forward as a conditional use, which they were fine with. And have already submitted their application in eagerness of this passing. So the open sales lot, um, is allowed within, as a conditional use currently for other things in the B one and B two and now B I T business districts. Um, but is not allowed in the I one industrial districts, um, for good reasons. So specifically making this an open sales lot for custom-built trailers, is intentional, um, for some of our most highly valued land protected with the highest, I guess, infrastructure that we have within our city, the largest infrastructure, so that those lots can be used at their highest and best use. The open sales lots are regulated by section thirteen of use regulations. And so they have standards that they must follow, including, um, concrete or bituminous, uh, parking areas as well as curbing. And must follow all the things that are required within our regular parking lots throughout the city. As well as require solid screening, um, to a minimum height of six feet along any portion that is open, abutting residential property or districts. The planning commission did recommend approval of this moving forward as a conditional use in this district.
And they were okay with all the requirements that-
Yes.
To do that, okay.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Moving on to K two, the resolution to consider approval of the final P U D for Fairway Greens North, third edition.
Good evening again. Um, looking back at January twenty twenty-one, um, the council approved a preliminary plat and P U D for the Fairway Greens North development with a variety of conditions. And we have a new developer now, the applicant J P P, J P B Land LLC was applied for the final plat for the third, um, edition of this development, which will consist of forty-four lots out of a hundred and seventy-four lots total in the P U D. The development agreement is also included, um, in the next item for approval. And the planning commission, um, did get to, I did bring it forward to the planning commission earlier this evening just to get any updated comments. Since this already was approved, um, so it didn't have to formally go in front of them, but just to make them aware since the timeframe, continues as we go through each phrase, phase has been, you know, longer than what we normally see. The developer is here to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
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 All, all opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K three, the resolution to consider approving the development agreement for Fairway Greens North, third edition.
Again, this is the development agreement that follows the final plat that was just approved. The following conditions are being considered: a letter of credit and the amount approved by the city engineer. And in a form approved by the city attorney is submitted to the city. The final plat must be approved by city council, which did happen. And prior to signing of the development agreement, any outstanding escrow fees or financial guarantees as stated within the development agreement shall be established or paid. Otherwise, we're all in good standing and we have the development agreement has been agreed upon and signed by our developer and is ready, um, for your approval.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K four, the resolution to consider chlorine regeneration system replacement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the water treatment plant was built in two thousand and eight and designed to create its own bleach on site. The bleaches are like a low percent, point seven, point eight percent. It was replaced in twenty seventeen and now it's up and needs to be replaced again now. It, uh, it's kind of unique, um, that we create our own bleach on site. Not a lot of cities do that, but we're a few cities in Minnesota and it's more popular in Iowa to do that. It's safer. I think it's got a better quality than our backup, which is A zone. We flushed twice this year. Normally, we flush once a year. That's in the spring. Last summer, we got, when we were doing the water tower, we got complaints last fall with the water because we were on the backup system. And being the Myox failed. Now we're on the backup system again now, so we flushed again this fall. So we researched, um, who we can get the chlorine regeneration system from. And Vesco is the only place that's local that can service a chlorine regeneration system. It would be for us to install. We'd have our contracted plumber, contracted electrician, and total control would enter it in the SCADA. Um, we put a small comparison together on the difference between the two units. I think the big one is the top one, where it's gonna cost five hundred thousand dollars in chemical to stay on the backup, such and such as the A zone for the next twenty years. And ironically enough, we went on the A zone, or, uh, the microchlor system. It'd be the same thing in twenty years, because it should last twenty years, so.
So I, I have a question here. If you look at the memorandum, uh, it is nine seventeen, twenty twenty-four. If you look at the options page and then it says replace Myox onsite generation system with another Myox onsite for two sixty-eight. And then it says replace M, M, uh, Myox onsite with microchlor for sixty-four thousand. Is that, are those two just mixed around?
So we, we did research on that, that Chlor-Tec that is in Texas and very, their customer service is terrible. So we were waiting on quotes, waiting on quotes, and then actually that, that quote that you have there is a different quote because we made really sure, that's a really big number, made really sure we were getting what we need, and it's actually a little bit bigger unit than what was there. So the M C one hundred is what we're looking for.
And just to clarify, um, the Myox machine is a brand. The Myox company, or the company that made the Myox brand was bought out by Chlor-Tec. So that's why it was looking at, it's still chlorine regeneration system, but Myox is not a thing anymore. They dissolved. So Chlor-Tec was a company that Denora had replaced the Myox unit with, um, different techno, similar technology, but different name.
I under, I understand that explanation, but the prices here are wrong, if that's the case. Um, if you look at options, uh, bullet point number two and read the first sentence of that and then the first sentence of the next bullet point. I'm not, I'm not really sure. Those prices don't line up with what we have here and it's off by two hundred thousand something.
Which page do you look at?
Uh, if you look at the memorandum that's labeled nine seventeen, twenty-four chlorination for water system, it says background, history of water treatment.
So that's the memo that is just for the research or for the background of the chlorination system, the water system, Matt? Those numbers are old. Those are before the new numbers were collected for the discussion today. I know the memo has today's date on it, but that is not the new information.
It went up over two hundred thousand dollars since this was looked into a few days ago?
No, it's not a few days ago. That, this was drafted months ago.
Oh, well, it still went up two hundred grand?
Correct.
Well, we're not touching that system, then. What happens if it's a million dollars next time when it-
Well, that's why we kind of ruled them out because their customer service, trying to get, you know, getting research on the one that we have to see, is it, you know, what's wrong with it? And it's basically, on the other one, it was replaced, got replaced at seventy-eight years. Same as this one right now. We're in the same token down the road. It didn't last as long as it should have. Which is why we kind of ruled them out and said, okay, let's find somebody else. Vesco's a lot closer. We get other stuff from Vesco currently. And their customer service is really good.
Probably having that memo in there is not correct because those numbers are, it does depend on the type of unit, the size of unit. And that one in that second bullet, um, is for a larger unit. And the one in the third bullet is for a very small unit. And staff, once this was drafted, staff had determined that even though that that company had recommended that we go with this because of our flow and our dosage and feed rate, it was not correct. We had engineering with Bolt and Mink review everything that we have for chemical going through for the amount of water and to last, because we don't want it to become obsolete in the next seven years. We want to make sure it lasts the, the lifespan of the unit itself. So unfortunately, in that memo, there is no tie to what unit that is, but that is what's going on, correct? Matt?
Correct.
So is that option, the very first option, the first bullet point on that, repair of the current Myox onsite generation system for eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars? And then, uh, diodes for two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and we expect that to potentially last another ten to twelve years. Is that accurate, then?
Well, we're not sure if it's just diodes.
Okay.
It could be something else wrong with it too. And that's kind of what happened to it last time. It was like, we flew a guy out. He's able to make it go another, I don't know, six, eight months till we got our unit, got a new one. And my fear is that's gonna happen again. And he comes up, he fixes it, manipulates it, whatever. It's working when he's gone, but it didn't last.
But I mean-
That's kind of a history of background of what happened, what has gone on up there. And it's, it's somewhat misleading when you look at the diodes and replacing a lot of the guy up there because we don't know what else is wrong with it, if anything else is wrong with it. And then I feel like we're just throwing money in the wind and it's smarter just to get a different unit. They say it's gonna last twenty years.
Well, but at a price tag of, you, so you said something there I wasn't following. You said five hundred thousand dollars to just continue to add, use chemical like we are doing now. Where we purchase the chemical and add it and that kind of thing versus generating our own.
Correct.
You said it would be the same, though, over the course of the twenty years.
Correct.
But the, the price that we're seeing here, so this two sixty-
Well, that doesn't, that's, that's a guess on what the install, okay, so the chemicals there was like two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-some thousand for the unit. And then the rest is just, what is it gonna take to put it in there? That's, that's the difference.
So you get it, but you, you're estimating that over the course of twenty years, we're gonna spend the same whether we just do the chemical or we buy the machine and, and-
That's-
But the last machine only lasted seven years.
Right.
Until, so the one that we have now, we're now repairing it and wanting to replace it after, what'd you say, twenty eighteen it was replaced?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen. So, I mean, that makes me a little nervous that we're gonna spend that money and then have to replace it again.
Well, we're getting a completely different unit because that customer service with, well, it's a Denora, but it's just terrible. They just, they're very hard to get a hold of. You get a hold of the right person. I mean, I've called a few different times, sent emails and the email I got back was for like two weeks, it, you know, I'm on vacation, then, you know, just, it was difficult.
And that's the people that we have now.
That's the current people we have now.
Right.
Yep.
We're definitely not gonna buy anything from them in the future, but, you know, I mean-
At that price tag, it's tempting to almost try it because-
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's just to, to try and see if we can fix it and get another ten, twelve years out of it. And if it's supposed to last twenty and it's only lasted seven, well, we should be able to get more time out of it.
With the, with the Chlor-Tec, it was more like ten. Should last ten.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, so it's still-
Where this, where Vesco is saying that this microchlor is gonna last, should last you twenty years with your routine maintenance.
But you're gonna spend an awful lot of money on it and we're already, I mean, water, water rates are already an issue because of, you know, the growth that we've seen and stuff over the last five years and the amount of water that people are using that, you know, we're, we're looking to add another well and all that kind of stuff besides, so.
I mean, if you look at it this way, even if, say, we spend fifteen thousand dollars to repair the, uh, Myox that's onsite right now. You know, if you amortize that five hundred thousand dollars it's gonna cost you to have this microchlor for twenty years, that's twenty-five thousand a year. So even if you get less than a year of working capacity out of that Myox, which hopefully you get more, you're still saving money on that first year. So, and it's a lot less investment. I, see, I was all for this with the sixty-four thousand. I guess I was hopeful, but this is wrong. So I, I, I just, it's hard to, to put trust in a company for twenty years on something that, when it starts to go bad, that company's just gonna disappear. Just like this Myox stuff, there's barely anybody to service it. So you have a, a pretty big investment and you hope it lasts twenty years. And if it doesn't, you're upside down. Heavy, so. I don't know. I would, I would rather see us try and fix that machine. And I hate to say it because I know you don't like the machine and because it's, uh, been problems. But for that kind of price tag, that's a pretty big, substantial hit.
Well, and I think the other part of it, though, too, is if you can use, if you can use the chemical, which, I mean, like you said, I mean, you have to back, you know, backflush and stuff more often, like twice a year instead of once a year, right? But-
But it's more dangerous for them to-
If, if we, yeah, if we're gonna, yeah, okay, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
Matt, what was the updated quote that you got for repair of the Myox?
That was the quote we got way back when. That was for that eight thousand plus the diodes.
That was when we originally had the, the issues, which was seven, eight months ago, something like that.
Correct.
They didn't get back to us with an update quote?
No.
You had asked though, correct?
Correct.
And that was from June, June?
Yeah, June.
I know, but do you, do you wanna spend two hundred and fifty thousand and, or well, five hundred thousand over the twenty years?
Without-
I mean, that- Or, or the other argument too is that, do you, do you, I mean, if you just continue to use the chemical, you can split that cost out over the twenty years instead of having everybody today pay for it, you know what I mean?
If, if, excuse me, if we decide to go on the A zone, it's meant to be a backup, not a permanent system. So if we're gonna go with the A zone as a permanent system, we had to put a bigger day tank in there and we have a big tank. We pump it out of this day tank. That's gonna take a couple, a couple of days a week to do that, or a couple of hours every week to do it. Every couple of days, it's gotta get done. And we gotta put, um, there's some wiring, we gotta put a transfer pump in there to fill this tank up. It's, uh, you know, I think I estimated at thirty-five or thirty-nine thousand if we have to do that, so.
If you wanted to switch to permanently going with the chemical option.
The backup is meant to be a backup. With this, with this running the A zone the way we are now, we, if we're gonna do that long term, we need to have some extra pumps here. We need to have some stuff on hand to do that.
Okay.
Because when the, when the Myox, so say, would go down, we had this A zone as a backup. And we're realizing, running it long term, our quality water is not as good as if we had the chlorine regeneration system.
And I, I would agree with that. I've gotten significantly more messages in the last couple of months about the water than usual. And it's probably because of the A zone, not because they're not managing it properly. I think they're doing a good job, but it's just not as consistent because of the high dosing. And if it's not perfectly mixed, you're looking at a twelve and a half percent, uh, concentration versus point seven or point eight. You can, you can hide that point seven, point eight a lot easier than twelve point five. You can, you can hide that point seven, point eight a lot easier than 12.5.
In a minute. We, we are running on the backup now long-term. I mean, for, we have been for the summer. And that's where we realize that we have some of the issues going on. So we're, we're taking samples out in the system, trying to dial that thing in, but we've never ran on it this long. So there are some adjustments being made. But you can't like make a big adjustment. It's just tiny little, tiny little adjustments at a time. So it doesn't, this is just a drip that we're, you know, the A-zone is getting pumped in the system. It's not like a, it's not like running in there. It's very small doses.
There's, there are no other competitors that make anything like this other than the two or three that are listed here?
Man, I, I researched and researched and researched.
And like you said, most cities, most cities are going with the, the A-zone, right?
Um, a lot of cities do, you know? But they have a different, everybody's got a different makeup of water too. So, you know, maybe the A-zone works better for them, you know?
Yeah. Well, what do you guys think?
I think on this one, I would rather see them try and fix it and it gives us more time to budget or figure something out. I, I don't know. I just don't see those bids as happening at the moment in my eyes.
I'm with fixing it.
I think it's worth a try anyway.
Yeah, I mean, if we can get 10, 12 years, that'd be great and give us time to buy a new system.
Well, like you said, Luke, I mean, if, even if you get six months out of it.
You're break even.
Yeah. I guess I'd rather try and see if we can get it fixed, but.
Yeah, I see it as a long, we've had issues with the water, like Luke has said. I think we should put the money in as an investment of long-term. If we're having problems already, and I don't like the high costs of it either, but this is a basic function of government. You got to supply good water. So I'm okay with spending the amount. I'm assuming we got in funds already there.
Like, we have to raise the water rates then, more.
Do, do we have any to take any of these options? Yes. But the option that you choose, it's, if it costs more, um, yeah, future water rates go up a little bit more. I mean, there's a direct correlation.
Yeah, I guess I'd, I mean, I'm not saying we wouldn't necessarily make the decision in the future to buy something. But I'm just saying, I'd rather try to fix this for that price. I'd rather try to fix it first and see what happens. And if we end up, you know, having issues or, you know, something like that, then we can always make the decision to buy it in the future. But for, you know, for less than, less than 12 grand, I mean, I think it makes sense to, to at least try to fix it. You know what I mean?
And maybe, maybe we could put in the CIP for a year or two hopefully and then at least we have.
Well, it's, it's currently in the CIP for next year.
Okay.
To get replaced.
Was that at the, this $500,000?
Well, it's, the, the machine itself is 230.
Yep.
And then it's installed after that. The 500 is with, um, over 20 years adding chemicals, purchasing the salt to make the, to make the chlorine.
And the amount, and the amount.
Right. Correct.
Yeah, and the, the amount that I have.
Would you have an estimate on install price? I mean, are we talking 20 grand, 200,000?
That's, I, I was told it could be upwards of 50,000. That's why it ended up being at the 500 there. I have no idea. I can't imagine this going to cost 50,000. I think that was a, just a number threw out at me. I don't know. I, I mean, it's, it's plumbing, it's electrical and it's, you know, it's.
You were going to say something, Mike?
Yeah, the, what is in the plan for next year is not this amount. It is not suff- what's currently in the plan is not sufficient to cover this option because that was indexed based on the last replacement cost. And prices increases, price increases have exceeded my inflation numbers. So that would need to be revised if we're going to go that route for, for 2025.
How far off is your, your estimate on that? And I mean.
Rough, rough math, 100,000. I, I had 100 and change. I need 200 and change.
And that's coming out of general fund or it's coming out of water?
All these costs would be the water fund explicitly. Yep.
Yeah, I mean, either way, if we, if we can still get more life out of it, even if it's due to be replaced, I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather push it back. I mean, if it's, if we can get by for another, I mean, like you said, I mean, if you got 12, 10, 12 years, if you make those changes and you can, can make it work for that time, I'd rather, I'd rather continue to do that.
And you said the lead time on this microchlor was 33 to 38 weeks roughly?
Roughly.
So that's, that's a long time either way.
Well, do you need a motion from us, I guess, to, to take action on that if that's the route we want to take or? Or you just want direction?
If we're going to be on this for the next six months, can we get a, a bigger tank up at the water plant and maybe go that route? If we're going to be on this for quite a while yet?
Well.
Because it, I'm guessing if we, if we did go with the microchlor, it'd be next, I can't imagine it being anytime but next fall. So if we're going to go with the A-zone, theoretically, we're going to be permanently on the A-zone for quite a while right now.
And just to clarify that, we don't have a backup because we're using the backup. So the great thing about having the A-zone there with the Myox machine is that we have redundancy. So we would never be where we'd have, can't treat the water and we have to treat the water. So that is the one of the, you know, we never like to cross our fingers kind of area. So we don't have a way to have a redundant system without having more supplies on hand, another day tank, maybe even another pump thing. So if something breaks and we need to fix it, we got something else we can plug into, so to say.
Well, I guess that's the question we didn't ask, right, is how long is it going to take to get them out there to fix it?
Yeah, well, it's 34 to 38 weeks, whatever it was. And then to line up the contractor and it's got to be that time of year and we couldn't.
Well, that was to install a new one, right? So I mean, but I've been.
Oh, to install the backup?
No, having them to come out to do the repair. My, my concern with that is, we discussed this weeks ago and had them, asked them to give us an updated quote and we have not. I think you've sent the email at least twice. They have not even responded.
I think sometimes you got to call them and rouse them, talk to management.
Well, it's, I've called.
Okay, okay. I'm just making sure.
And when they come out, we have to clarify that because it includes all travel, the airfare, the lodging, all that stuff. We pay that in addition to the repair.
Okay. Can we, uh, can we send the machine? Maybe it's a stupid question, but I mean, can we send the machine down to them?
Well, it's a big unit.
Yeah.
It's, it's probably, oh, five feet tall, three feet crossed, probably four feet long. It's a, it's a big, heavy unit.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
I mean, it's, 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 it's not, it's not, uh, how do I say it?
And it's all plumbed in and it's all in place. Yeah, it would not make sense to send it to them.
And it needs to be calibrated and things like that. I'm not sure if we were to repair it down there, if we moved it up here, who's to say that?
Well, you guys, I said maybe it was a stupid question.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying stupid.
Yeah, you're right. It is a stupid question, Jimmy. I got it, I got it. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, but that other tank you were talking about, that would be the 39.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, are you saying that you think maybe we ought to have something like that anyway? Josie, when you're talking about redundancy?
I like redundancy.
What she's saying is, what if, what if we run on A-zone and then all of a sudden we can't get A-zone for a month and we run out?
Well, not necessarily that. I mean, that, the only time that that has been an issue was during 2020 timeframe. And we were told that we potentially couldn't get a delivery and then I said, you will make a delivery. So that did happen. We did have somebody had to be here at like nine o'clock for the truck.
It sounds like just about every city in Minnesota uses the A-zone. So it's not like, it's not like.
In that timeframe, I mean, we've only had one instance I can think of that it was like, ooh, we need it. You need to come here. Otherwise, we haven't had an issue. But my concern is, I like to have another set of the tanks, the, another day tank, another pump. So if ours breaks, not that we can't get chemical, but if like the pump breaks, we have another one sitting on the shelf, put that in.
Well, when's the next meeting? October 1st? I'm, I'm not opposed to doing that, but I just.
My recommendation, if I could, Mayor, is to maybe table this discussion until the next city council meeting. Really hit hard to get an exact hard number from the repair people.
And how long?
How long it's going to take to get out here, exactly how much it's going to cost. If there's one or more diodes that need to replace and really dial in that cost. And then get hard numbers on having a redundant system as an interim and bring that back.
Okay.
What happens if you don't hear back from them?
Well, then I think we got to consider our options. Yeah.
We've been hit hard with this stuff in the last two years, the water stuff especially.
Well, especially because the, the use, I mean, over the last five years, I, what is, what was the percentage of increase? Just because all the new houses have sprinkler systems. I mean, it's unreal.
The, the per capita use went up about 40, 45%.
Over a five-year period, yeah. Per capita. That's not just, that's not just overall. That's per person.
If you spread it out, it's that much. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's why the odd even water restrictions.
And that's why there's, yeah, well, but that's, and that's why there's a need for a second, you know, or a third or a fourth well, I mean, so.
As long as we're on the water, how's that list going there, Mike?
On the, on the commercial businesses?
Yep.
It's actually going pretty darn well. The vast majority of people that utility manager has gone to visit, and I, when I say vast majority, I'm talking like 98% of them are thrilled that he went out there. Didn't tell them they had to do anything, but just said, hey, this would save you a bunch of money if you did this. The vast majority are super receptive and the only ones we haven't, haven't been receptive have been the ones that council member Merrill guessed right out of the chute is the corporate ones that don't actually have anyone in town that is, you know.
They don't care.
Kind of is the impression, yeah. But the vast majority have been really thrilled and have asked Jim to come out again. Hey, can you, can you show me the chart that shows that I've, you know, I've dropped my water usage? They're, they're really thrilled about it and they've been doing it and sticking to it. It's been good.
That's awesome.
Great. Well, thank you, Matt, for getting all that put together for us and stuff. But yeah, so I, I think that makes sense is, let's see how quickly they could come and do their repair. But I'm not opposed to, to adding the, the equipment that you need to, to have the backup and do it the right way, especially if it's going to be a while.
Get some hard numbers put together.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you, guys.
Mayor, if we could get a motion to postpone it to the October 1st.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, you bet.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundina and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion carries 4-0. All right, moving on to K5, resolution to consider accepting a grant for Bluebird Park. Actually, do we need to wait for George to take a vote on that? Okay. Sorry. Oh, no, I know. I'm just saying that if he's required, he might be required to vote on it was why I might worry, but no, okay. Now, are you sure on that? Because we've had discussion before where, just a point of order discussion here. So we've had talks before where somebody wants to abstain from a vote and they're forced to make a vote. But if they went to the bathroom, they wouldn't have to make that vote?
That's a good point.
Know what I'm saying?
Let's just do the vote.
We will no longer let people go to the restroom.
Well, at least not when we take a vote. George, we had a, a motion to table that until we had more information. Are you, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so make that a 5-0 vote. All right, K5, resolution to consider accepting a grant for Bluebird Park.
Okay, after a lot of discussions this year about park dedication funds, the committee of the whole directed the park board to go through and figure out what projects were needed and one of them was Bluebird Park. And so this is what they came up with and we moved forward with. So Bluebird Park is, was slated for the Splash Park project that didn't move forward. And so we tried to keep that budget consistent with that, which was 400,000, which is what the city was going to put forward. All of these are recommended through park dedication funds, which we do have currently 639,000 in park dedication funds through August. But we do have approximately 130,000 coming in additionally in the next 15 days. So just keeping that in mind. So for a total of 768,000.
I have a quick question if that's okay. So is this proposed to demolish what's there and put this in its place?
This is going to improve the park and will give us a whole new playset.
Oh, so the old one is staying?
The old one is not staying. This will improve that play area.
No, I did ask in the park meeting, I did ask if we could move that play equipment to another location, which, I was up at a, an event in Harris recently and they had done that where they bought park equipment from Brook Park or not Brook Park, Brooklyn Park, I think. And had moved equipment up to Harris and reinstalled it and had volunteers do it and they, they made it work. So that's just a thought, but I know that staff sounded like they were maybe not in favor of doing that.
Because of the age of this play, structure is about 25 years old, so it's already past its useful life. And the pieces to the equipment are getting more expensive as we learn this year, as we replace some of the pieces. That it's, if we can salvage some of the parts, we definitely will. But we'll just see how that process goes through demolition. The pieces that we can salvage, we know for sure are the new slide, the new tube, which match two other playsets that we have within the city. So they're replaced, they can easily fix those pieces and we won't have to buy new expensive pieces that are not, no longer in stock. And those playgrounds are roughly the same age as this playset.
Wouldn't it make more sense just to put this on a different piece and leave that one there until it's really done with its useful life?
I think this park as, and I do have, do know we have a park board member here also who would like to speak if possible, if you want her opinion. But I do think since this is the community park that everybody goes to, this is not the park to just leave, to basically turn into decrepit. If we're gonna, it's better for us to keep this park vibrant. We have so many people who would go to it every year. We see it every day you go to this park, no matter what time of year, somebody's using this play.
And it's still being used. That's my point. It's still being used now. So if you add another one, it's not costing you any money to keep it. So why demolish something that would still be used?
Well, I can tell you that if we do choose to put this in another place, it will substantially increase the cost of a new location because the grading and all of that work is done. Everything's in place, the lighting's done. All of that stuff is already done. We're basically, you know, we're improving this, but we're adding new surfacing to make it more inclusive. And this park would be all-inclusive and one of the only ones in the state of Minnesota, greater Minnesota that allows a child in a wheelchair or a grandparent to go all the way with a walker, all the way up to the third level. And so I think it's, it's a great option to actually improve this park and gives our community something that they wanted for those who were looking forward to the Splash Park and it's reaching a broader audience.
Is that one of the parks we recently did some, uh, work on?
Mm-hmm.
We replaced.
It's wasted money.
It was wasted money.
Well, those pieces are able to be used in two other of our park locations that are just as old. So both Rum River Meadows and Isantia, I can't remember. Rum River, sorry, Riverside Park and Rum River Meadows have the exact same equipment. So the slide will work that we just purchased as well as the tube. We'll work on those to replace those when and if they become, you know, not able to use, which fading is happening. And that is, I mean, it's going to, it'll, it's just a matter of time before those have to be replaced as well.
What was the park board vote on this?
Well, remember you guys, what we're talking about now is just accepting the grant. So we're not deciding, because ever, am I right about that?
I mean, it would be nice to move forward with the entire project if we're going to accept it.
Well, and see, that's the thing is I'd rather see a priority list from the park board instead of just one.
And we do have basically that and that's why there's so many things brought forward tonight. And so this was the number one priority decided upon by consensus of the park board. And so this was their priority item that they wanted to see move forward. We do have a park board member here to speak if you'd like her to.
Come on up. Just if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Shakrea Lee, addresses 416 Bluebird Drive, Northwest Isanti, Minnesota. I do think that this is a worthwhile investment and enhancement to our city. As someone that is very heavily involved with the community, meeting with other moms and other members and spending a lot of time at this park, there are some things that need some adjusting and I know that we have taken the time to fix what we could. But overall, the CIP is getting ready to be, it's due to be changed. And I think another point that she brought up that's super important to me and why I joined the council and I'm sorry, the board, is because I do have a son that is not able to walk to some of the play spaces, well, really any of them. And his wheelchair at the moment. is because I do have a son that is not able to walk, um, to some of the play spaces, well, really, any of them, um, and his wheelchair at the moment has a hard time getting through, um, all of it, really. It would be really great to see the city do something like an inclusive park for all of the things that she mentioned, because this park is the heart of the city. Everybody comes to Bluebird Park, um, for events, um, we do a lot of things there for the community, it really is the heart, um, of Bluebird as far as parks go. So I do think that we should make a good investment in making this park look and look great and have a proud park, um, there because it's so heavily used. Again, to go back to an all-inclusive playground, I think especially the community members that visit Courage, Kenny, this would be amazing, um, because again, we are directly supporting kids and people that can get to the park and make it accessible. I love the idea of having a wheelchair that can go to the slide, that is huge for someone that can't get to the slide with her son, it's a lot for me to bring him up and, um, he particularly has devices in his throat, he has a device on his stomach, so it can be a hazard to take him out of his wheelchair, to bring him up to the slide for things catching and, you know, becoming a, a risk, so to be able to move him in his physical wheelchair changes the game, it really does, so. I think this is a worthwhile project, like I said, I've spoken to a lot of the community members about it, because we couldn't do the splash pad, I think that this would be like a, hey, I know we couldn't get that done, we really all wanted that, but at least we can give you an updated all-inclusive park, thank you.
Thanks, Shakrea. So, let's let Stephanie kind of give us the rest of the, of the story here on the, the grant and that kind of thing too, and then we can kind of discuss this more, but.
So, um, through a few options, this was the option that was chosen by the, and I'll go back to the picture, by the park board, um, to move forward with, um, the inclusive park model. And to save money, that's why you see the surfacing not of the entire park, because it is a very expensive feature, but it does allow the swings and the major, um, structure to be accessible a hundred percent. Staff also to get the number to see the five or the two to five-year-old area also, um, to be accessible, which we think if we're moving forward would be the, the best choice, um, but it's up to you guys to make that decision on how you wanna move forward with that. The grant application was to receive up to fifty percent of the pre-designed structure costs and so that includes, um, the larger items you see, so we had to pick from a list of things that we could potentially get fifty percent of the cost covered.
When you say grant, it's from the company, it's not a government grant, it's the company giving you the grant, yeah.
And we did get the, we did get the budget before we applied for the grant, so it, it is not a hiked up cost that they do and then give you a grant, like, we already had the numbers prior to applying, so. So they, the pre-designed structures are Dallas Dazzler and Chalice and the grant amount awarded is a hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and five dollars. Um, and the grant must be accepted and the str- accepted in the structure's ordered by October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four to get it for twenty twenty-five. So these are the two playground pre-designed structures, um, and it says in Chattanooga, but we got updated pictures, so these are actually the renditions, the three D renditions of what it would look like in Bluebird Park. Um, now, on the younger playground equipment, they don't do as many platforms for more accessibility, as well as visibility for parents to see where the kids are playing and more climbing options. A few of the add-on features, which we didn't replace in the past, were a climbing structure which wasn't included, um, as well as more shade, which we've talked about in the past, so these are not included in the overall budget.
I would have to say, if you can go back on that, 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 uh, Christmas tree one, that one's actually kind of dangerous.
It's on the gr- it's on the.
Yeah, yeah, is that the one that spins too? Oh, man, those are, that's, that one's wild.
One of my kids' favorite things to play on and they're older, so I feel like they're great, because they get kids playing still when they're older ages. This also includes, if you can see, um, an accessible, um, like spinning, I forget what it's called now, merry-go-round, um, that is flush with the ground and that's in, you can see, um, to the right of the large structure. And it maintains our current swings and confirms that location, so we won't be replacing those. And then adds the addition of a longer zip line, which we currently don't have one, we just have one that you can hang across, but this one's a seated zip line, um, which, this park does a good job of giving somebody, something for everybody of all ages. And then includes shade as well, you can see the three shade areas, um, they're the squares with the X through them. So the total cost of all the equipment, just the equipment itself, is thirty hundred and two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, freight of eighteen thousand thirty-three dollars, and installation, demo and surfacing of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars for a total price of five hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. The grant of a hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and seven dollars for a total cost to the city of four hundred thousand dollars and ten cents, um, which was what the city was intending on spending on the Splash Park project, um, initially, which is where the budget came from, um, just in comparison. We'd also like you to just consider the following additions of adding a state shade over the two to five area, which we've talked about, because it helps preserve and there's not a lot of shade within the park, which would be a twelve by forty shade over the structures, which is an addition of thirty thousand.
Is that made out of plastic?
It's sails, like, so it's metal and then the sails and the sails are, um, you can take them down in the winter, so that's.
Okay, so, do you know how long the expected life of those is? Because that's gonna be a recurring cost.
It is, they have a pretty exten- I don't know exactly the life, but we have one in the community garden, Matt's not here, but that one's holding up really well and it's been there for, I don't know, do you know how long that's been there for?
Five.
And the colors that you choose, like, we'll choose one that specifically they're light green, so they're not fading, um, you don't choose dark blue, for instance, or red, because those fade a lot sooner, um, but I can find out the useful life of those as we move forward, but. There's other options too for smaller sail ones that we could get, where you'd have more, and so those, I think you can get the sails, um, for different, lower cost than a large hex shade, but.
And does our insurance cover all of this equipment if some, if there were to be a tornado that came through or hail that ripped the, the shade covers, is that something our insurance would cover, or is that something we'd have to come up with on the spot?
No, we'd be, it just, it's just like with the, when we built the liquor store, right, you're automatically considered to be covered and bonded, or, um, what is the phrase? That, that's not the great, quite the right word, but you're automatically covered during construction and then it's automatically added as well. So, we'd get an updated, we'd get an updated price in the subsequent year, but they're just default extending the coverage, yep.
And we've had this shade so far at the community garden for seven years, so, and it looks brand new. Um, the Vista Treetop, which is the tree one that we had spoken about before, um, which would be in that area where the previous climber was, um, is twenty-seven thousand dollars and these include installation, these aren't just the price of the cost of it. And then, um, port in place, um, surfacing under the two to five area would approximately cost forty thousand dollars in additional cost for that area.
Just the two to five, this, this other price is with?
Yes, the full price is the other, was the picture that you see, so that, that's the four hundred thousand that the city would be in, these are additions that we could make and just would suggest if we're gonna go through with a project, um, that could be the time to think about them as well, since we didn't replace that climber, as well as just doing the port in place now for the two to five area, if you know, two to five-year-olds, they, they do not like being dirty and they don't love to have wood chips on them, so. And that's all for that one.
So, I, I noticed that it said October twenty-fifth for order deadline.
Yep.
Is, does the grant expire at that point, or could we put this off a year and then do it next year instead?
Nope, the grant expires at that time, so they just do it, they have a grant every year in August, some years they don't do it, some years they do extra money, um, and they pick certain sections of their book that you can apply for the grant for. Yes, we, we currently have, as of August, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, but in the next, with Fairway Greens North plat that was just approved, coming in on Friday, um, which will be another seventy-nine thousand, um, as well as Whiskey Apartments too, which they're just gonna be starting construction on. That's another fifty thousand that will be coming in, so.
So, if, if this were to go through, there would be no possibility of getting a splash pad in the next handful of years, because the money wouldn't be there?
It just, well, it depends on the development.
Well, we don't have that grant anymore, I mean.
Oh, right, that's, I'm, this is, it's a big chunk.
Any clue on how much that pump track came out to be?
Yes, so.
I don't know what's on the next item, but I'm trying to decide.
I think it's gonna be a while before we get one of those pump tracks.
I don't think that's happening.
It's, the pump track itself is three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Three hundred?
Yes.
Itself, including the skate park.
And then the skate park project is four hundred thousand, so just to improve the.
I, I, yeah, that seems like a good business to be in, I guess.
So.
That's kind of my concern, I guess, is it's like, that is a large chunk of that money that we have and I just.
And what's there is still.
Really wanna be careful about making a decision, and what's there is still usable and we repaired, you know, we've replaced the tube, I think, and we patched the slides, or do we order new slides that, that part?
We ordered one new slide.
One new slide and we patched the other one and replaced, and we, we patched the, patched the tube.
We patched, we replaced one of the tube sections and replaced one of the slides and then repaired, patched a slide, patched two slides and another section of something else there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying I don't wanna do this, I'm just saying I just.
I say we do.
Big decision, is what I'm saying.
You can table it until we discuss the other items, if that's what you would like to do.
Yeah, we have another meeting or two before we have to make a decision.
I, I don't think that other item is, I mean, you can get, we might as well go to that, but.
Well, I, I think, I think you replace the big structures and take advantage of the grant and then you can piece in all the added, added amenities at other points, but at least you're replacing the big structures, which is the main cost and there are problems with that current playset and it is the most used park. And then that would leave money for, was it, uh, Fairway Greens North?
North, yes.
Which I wanna leave money in there to build that, because, you know, try to add parks or repair parks as many of them as possible with this park dedication funds. That's my, my thought.
What, do you wanna make that motion? I'll second it.
Well, is, is, I had a question. To just replace the big, the two big structures, is that gonna come to a hundred and ninety-three thousand on the city side? And is it four hundred thousand to include all the added structures that you?
Four hun- it, that includes all of the items like the zip line, as well as leave, and the port in place surfacing, so it's only the addition of the zip line, as well as the three sage shade structures around, um, the outside perimeter for picnic tables.
So that'd be the four hundred thousand dollar cap?
I did have one question on it, the port in place surfacing for that entire area, we had, I know in the, and I, I think we had kind of discussed it at the park board meeting, but, uh, if we were to just do the port in place as a walkway sort of to an area where it's around the swings and then wood chips.
This, this is the safest, safest way that they can do that, so this is that option of doing the walkways, because, um, it's just a portion and that's why there's such a large, large section still of wood chips, um, because they need it to be so there's no fall zones where kids would fall onto the edge of the port in place, so they have specific safety requirements that we have to follow for that diameter.
So, I mean, what was the price if you took the port in place out, which, I mean, obviously, the port in place is kind of what makes it accessible, right, so, I mean, you can't, if, if you're trying to go for accessibility, then your, your port in, but, I mean, what was that if it was just wood chips?
I believe it's, sorry, just trying to think, it's around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the port in place.
How do they get so much money for this stuff? There's, that list is, was that almost five hundred, yeah?
How does that compare if, instead of the port in place, we just go concrete, which, I mean, I guess you don't want that in a, in a playground.
That's what the splash pad was gonna be.
There's another stupid question for you.
But this is much higher because of the height of the structure and a fall distance.
Yeah.
I can't wrap my head around that price tag.
Right now, I think it's only gonna go up.
It goes up every year, so, this is actually, there are equipment, things that we looked at, there are six hundred thousand just for the equipment, like, the park in Shoreview they just built was three point five million, I think, to build, something along that line, so just in a way.
Unless you have a bigger tax base.
I guess the other thing that, you know, I don't see on this list for tonight for discussion was the, the Veterans Memorial on.
Which, we are just waiting for, um, the VFW to get back to us with their comments, so we have reached out to them again. The park board does wanna see that move forward and felt like their recommendations with this park, as well as just, um, repairing the equipment, which doesn't come out of park dedication, because it's a repair of the equipment of the skate park equipment, as well as moving, so this park, Fairway Greens North, and then they felt they could still, um, make a substantial starting contribution to the start of the VFW.
So I guess I haven't done the math on that, but so what, what did you have left? If you were to do all the things that are recommended here, what would you have left over still?
With the recommendations as well, um, or just with the, the, I mean, we'd have three hundred and sixty-eight if we do the four hundred thousand and then, sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's.
So, three, two, seventy?
Assuming we don't do the pump track at.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or assuming we don't do any of the skate park.
But, I mean, the Fairway Greens North, so that's taking all that out, you're saying?
No, if we did the four hundred thousand plus Fairway Greens North, which we're assuming will cost high ballpark, because we haven't done enough estimating on that one yet, um, we just want direction to move forward with that. I would guess all in around a hundred thousand, but we can set that budget at what we want it to be, so it would be five hundred thousand and plus, then we'd have the remaining amount left over for other park amenities. So that's what they wanna move forward with right now, is Fairway Greens North and this park are their two priorities.
To give you a, just a quick cost breakdown on this, if, say if it were five hundred and nine thousand and our useful life is expected to be twenty years, that's costing the city seventy dollars a day to have this. That's what it comes to in math numbers.
Well, remember, you're, you're actually at four hundred for the cost, but.
Yeah, but you're gonna have replacement in that twenty years of stuff too, so I guess if you do. Fifty-five dollars a day. For the next twenty years.
Yeah, I mean, I. I mean, you gotta spend the money on something, I mean, that's what it's there for, or you can save it and you could, you know, use, put it toward a community centers, I mean, you don't necessarily have to spend it, right, you know, I mean, you could save it for something larger too, but.
I like the idea, I just wish the prices seemed more reasonable, it just doesn't seem reasonable. But I don't know what you do about that, you just don't buy.
But, anyway, any other discussion, otherwise I had a motion in a second, so. But, anyway, any other discussion, otherwise I had a motion in a second, so. And I guess one thing we didn't talk about either was, is this playground equipment what we want? You know, I mean, did you guys, did you look at, you know, I mean, is it entertaining enough? Is it fun enough for, you know, for the, the, the kids that we're hoping to provide a service for, right? You guys were all comfortable with that?
What did the park board discuss?
I think that was, yeah, I mean, I think the initial, initial thought when we looked at it, and in Shakira, you could help me remember if I'm, but I think when we first looked at it, we thought, well, it doesn't really have enough features. But then we, but the more we looked at it, the more we thought it probably was, was okay, but that was something that we just talked about.
How strong of a warranty is it, again?
I do not know.
Does it have any warranty, or?
And are any of these parts?
It is game time, and so you can speak on it.
Well, I think usually when we plan for the CIP, it's twenty to thirty years, at, I mean, twenty is on the, maybe with some intentional damage being done, but usually the, the lifespan is upwards of thirty. Depending on the, you, the exact, you know, like, I, I think that when we had, um, some apparatus before that had been damaged, maybe it didn't, but again, there was some intentional damage being done, but, yeah.
And the shade structures, I think, will add to the life of the equipment too, I mean, right? I mean, that's the, kinda the idea behind having them, but, and are you saying there won't be any shade over the equipment? If we don't add, that, that other one was just added shade in for people that-
Right, it would add to the smaller, so it's for the, the two to five-year-olds is where it would be.
Okay.
Um, so it'd shade that area specifically.
So the main equipment is shaded with that four hundred thousand price?
The main equipment itself isn't shaded, but that equipment, because it's all metal, because of the way it's constructed, doesn't require shades according to our sales, we, he said they don't shade, they don't recommend the shades for that, but they do recommend it over the plastic pieces. So, just, and the ropes and stuff that are on the smaller equipment.
Okay, gotcha.
Thirty thousand for that lar- it's a large, it's forty by twelve, so, and that is the install as well, so the footings.
You can always talk about that at another time.
Yeah.
To do that, because that's not part of the grant payment.
Yeah, I mean, and I think, I think is, I'd-
Yeah, we just wanted to give you all of the additions we thought were maybe missing also for this as well, since we're looking at it as a whole.
Right, and we can definitely, like you said, look at, at adding those in the future, so. Okay, and you, and your motion was to go the, the four hundred?
Yep.
At this time, and then look at that in the future? And what other, uh, well, now, I don't know if we need to necessarily add this to a motion, but I mean, if we talked about trying to use this equipment elsewhere, is that something that we need to motion for? Or you'll just do that anyway, right?
Um, staff will definitely pay attention and-
Save what we can.
Save what we can, like that is our goal. We're already gonna save for sure all the plastic pieces we can, that can be just easily taken off to use on our other equipment, because we need to, so.
Where are we gonna store them?
Old salt, Ted.
Chief has room.
Well, I mean. I mean, I think some of it potentially could be used at, you know, other parks right now. I mean, it's not necessarily that it has to be stored somewhere.
There is one section, um, like the glider section on the southeast side of the structure that we might be able to potentially use, um, within this configuration too, so we're gonna see exactly how it works. Um, we're trying to save whatever we can, that we think isn't going to fail. Like, so if that section's made of mostly metal and it's in good shape, we're gonna, we're trying to keep it. I just don't wanna make any promises we can't.
Right. Okay, so I had a motion from Councilman Lundine, and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
So that motion carries four to one. Thank you. Uh, you wanna take the next one here? So we got, uh, case six, resolution to consider approving repairing the Bluebird Park Skate Park.
Okay, so we did our research on finding skate park information. Um, there are not very many skate park engineering firms within the country, so just an FYI. Um, the ones that we did contact, a lot of them didn't get back to us, so we got this one, which Elk River and a few other local communities just use for their skate parks in the last few years. Um, so we knew they were good, and actually gave them comparable prices after contacting the cities, just to see, um, what they thought of them, so, um, the amount for the new skate park, we have a really big footprint for the skate park, which is great. Kids skate all over it. Um, it's four hundred thousand dollars for basically the, the bare minimum of what we can put on this site. And so, um, four hundred thousand dollars for what you see here on that slab. And so the other section, everything to the right of that in your picture, is another three hundred thousand for the pump track. So, and that is because of the grading they, they do for the concrete structures within the, the current skate park footprint. They cut out the concrete and put new footings in for those, because it's just a floating slab. So that increases some of the costs, but otherwise, they said we did save a substantial amount of money, even with having a slab in place already, so imagine what that would cost.
So that's just basically the three hundred thou- or four hundred thousand is just to make the wooden steel equipment and put it out there and mount it, essentially?
It's not wooden steel, it's concrete.
The whole, the whole thing is concrete?
The whole thing is concrete. So the, the different colors you see are, and they add some steel to it in some of those, but some of it's just different colored concrete.
What's the useful life on that? It's Minnesota?
A long time, a lot longer than the stuff we currently have, yes.
Okay. So, have we ever reached out to the BMX about maybe them working on a pump track over time? Versus, I mean, there, I, I don't see that being a reasonable endeavor for us. But maybe if they have volunteers and they can chip away at it, I mean, we do, uh, we do bike, bike paths at the county park, and we just do a little bit here and there every, every couple of years with volunteers, or with, sometimes we hire a little bit out here and there, but I don't know if that's anything we've ever considered there. Because I think it's a great idea, but not for that price.
Well, it came up at the park board meeting about trying to talk to the BMX, but I said, well, the signs we have right now at the skate park say no, no bikes allowed, right? So, you know, I don't know that that's necessarily in their, in their purview to, to mess around with stuff like that, but, I mean, I don't-
Why does it say that? Cause people have been, I've been, ever since I was little, that's one of the big uses for it, so I don't know why those signs are even there.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, we can always take them down.
Yeah.
You guys are the board to do that.
I didn't know it said that, I haven't been there in, yeah.
I always just felt like a rebel, just driving my, riding my bike through, so.
Well, maybe we should leave it there, then, so we don't take away that feeling of rebellion from young, young minds of today.
So the park board's recommendation is to repair the current existing equipment at this time, but they're happy that we went through this process to see what this looks like and the potential cost, because this is a goal for them, to see this happen in five, ten years. And so, having a goal and knowing what, you know, what is possible and how much it costs really does help, you know, set things into motion more than you think, so. They're not obviously ready to invest this money or recommend that investment at this time, but they, um, do wanna, do think it's one of the priorities for the future.
I have a opinion on that skate park. I, I'm okay with repairing it, but I would like to spend some of the existing money left in the park and rec funds and expand it a little bit, instead of waiting five or ten years, because it may never get done. And it, and we have plenty of room on that pad right now to add more. And if we just gave some to the playground, we should give some to the skateboard park, instead of just repairing what we have there, because it's been in need of an improvement for a long time. And I know it's one of the number one concerns or, or wants of kids older that won't be on that playground, that, that would really like an upgrade to that park.
And there are other, if that's your direction, we can research with the park board to other options. Um, this was the longest lasting one, and the one that was originally recommended to look into, so.
Sure.
I also think that if you, if you bought new equipment for the, uh, the bike park, maybe that keeps some of those kids off the new equipment too, so, so change it up a little bit. Instead of buying the same ramps and everything, change up the concept of the-
That would-
The layout?
That'd be great, like spend a, see, we, you're right, we do need a serious talk on what to do with some of them funds, and I think we should, if we're using some up, we should use some more up and restart. What, what are the priorities, and I thought the skateboard park was definitely a top priority.
I didn't think it was gonna be that much money, I figured a hundred grand, maybe tops, but that's a, I think that changes that from a high priority to not that high for that kinda money. There's gotta be a company that just makes ramps. Like, you get a lot of enjoyment out of a steel and wood ramp, the, the stuff that's out there.
I think the direction to go on this thing is, we need to get some numbers and know what they, what needs to be done. I mean, I, you know, you talk four hundred thousand just for part of this thing, that's, that's, okay, that's not realistic. But we need to know, we need to know what we're looking at spending on the rest of the other equipment, and your expansion that you wanna do.
Yeah, just add a few, like, at least one or two more things in there.
Well, staff will, and the park board will discuss this at our next meeting and see what we can come up with.
But today, today you're looking at, do we wanna repair?
Do we wanna repair what is there, and that is the-
Scheduled for next year already, right, so.
It was scheduled for, yes, next year, um, and the amount of twenty-nine thousand, um, was in the CIP. So there's already that in the CIP for next year for the skate park. The, um, repairing of the equipment costs seventeen thousand, and that was in, that was adjusted for now. Um, we got those numbers back in March, and we updated them.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to even look at that saying that the CIP on there takes some of this money. They take forty thousand and go where they can go from there. I have absolutely no problem with that. Take forty out of that three seventy, three sixty-eight that's left over roughly, and that's still gonna leave us some more money to put elsewhere, and that's giving them forty grand.
I'd like to see a little more than forty, because I know how much each one of those pieces costs, and they're not cheap.
Well, it's already looking at seventeen thousand to repair it, and twenty-nine to, to do some other reschedule, other rescheduled repairs. Forty thousand is still another ten thousand dollars more, and seventeen to repair what's there.
Right.
So, another ten thousand is adding a lot more than you think if it's seventeen to repair.
Administrator Wood did find an article this year of one of the cities in Minnesota who was able to find skate park equipment, um, on, what was it? Some, not garage sale, it's surplus.
Some, yeah, surplus.
One city was getting rid of their skate park equipment, and another city purchased it and repaired it, so it saved them a lot of money, but they were able to increase the size of their skate park, so we could look at that option as well.
You said, you said other cities had the larger skate park, the concrete ones, what other cities, do you remember?
Elk River has one, St. Cloud has a huge one they just finished, there's a lot, Minneapolis has multiple.
Maple Grove.
Maple Grove has a very large one.
I think more, uh, there's a smaller, but I believe that theirs is also concrete.
Well, so I guess the question for today right now at this moment is, do we wanna move that up and spend that money now? Versus waiting till next year to spend it, so what's the, the timeframe on making the repairs? I mean, if we wait till next year when it's scheduled anyway, I mean, is that, can they do it in the spring?
It would be up to-
It's before people are wanting to get out and use it a whole bunch, or, or is there a reason that we have to pull it up a year, or?
Um, I don't think so, I think just was the recommendation just to repair it right now. I mean, it's not in good condition, so we have parts of it closed off.
Right, but I mean, but at this point now, what I'm saying is that how many, how many people are gonna use it now for the rest of the-
Right, it just depends, if we get a winter like last year, they'll be out there all winter, so.
What about, what about this for an option? We pull out the pieces that are in need of repair, set those aside, buy new pieces with the park and rec funds, because it's new, and, uh, it's a, and then next year, we budget that money that we, I mean, we use the money we already have budgeted for the repairs on the equipment that we pull out and put it back in. Just an idea, if, if there's an o-
And I'm not sure, and I'm not sure what the timeline on the repairs is either, um, if we're not, um, it depends on public work schedule, because they're the ones who are repairing this equipment, and so, I mean, maybe if you move it forward now, they can start as time allows, and they'll have more time throughout the winter to work on it if we ever slow season, but I can't predict the weather, obviously, so.
I think somebody wants to say something.
I can't speak to the skate park, other than every time we're open, I know a lot of our kids go to the skate park, so, you know, updating that would be good. Um, if a pump track is in the plan in the future, we would be open to either helping you consult or maybe even collaborating on something, you know, cause that's something the BMX kids are gonna use when we're not open. As a dad that's brought my kids all over the country to different BMX tracks, there are pump tracks that the BMX kids will not touch because of the way they're shaped. We've seen all kinds, from asphalt to concrete, um, there, there is snap-together types that cities have used. I believe Maple Grove has one, and they don't mind that, you know, but you gotta have a surface underneath it, so. Um, but either, in any event, uh, if that's something that's in the future, we'd be open to, like I say, maybe even collaborating a little bit, or at least consulting or helping you guys along with that.
On the snap-together tracks, is that something that can be reconfigured easily, so when, you know, you?
I believe, I believe you pick what you want, and that's how it comes.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's not like a Lego, you know, it's, it's a certain shape, gets bolted together, bolted down, so.
Okay.
Are you all to Maple Grove much to that pump track, have you seen it?
Rerarely, I, I brought my kids out there, uh, one time, and that was before we were actually in BMX, so. But I, I've heard a lot of kids do golf that way.
Okay. I personally like those snap-together pump tracks, but I know there was a discussion on them, and I know concrete is a better way to go because of the longevity of them, but they were cheaper, if I remember correctly, putting the snap-together ones, and that's pretty much what we have right now at the skateboard anyway, or skipper park.
We can look into that as well, I mean, that's an option.
Well, whether we spend the money now or next year, it doesn't really make much of a difference, I guess. I mean, it's, it is not too big a deal, so, yeah, I mean, I'm fine making the repairs as soon as possible, and, uh, if you guys wanna, you know, have the park board and give them direction on, you know, hey, we, would, maybe we'd be interested in adding some more equipment?
Okay.
You know, maybe not changing it all over to concrete and doing all that kinda stuff, but we could look at, you know, some options anyway, and, and we could maybe reach out to BMX and, uh, to remember BMX, and see if they are interested in, in partnering with on some, on something like that, so, or, or a pump track, so.
I can do that, I'm planning on attending their October fourteenth meeting, so, ask them then.
All right. Uh, so, yeah, I guess we would need a motion then to move these repairs up in, in our calendar and, and do them sooner than later.
Need a motion to move up repairs sooner?
I have a motion from Councilman Lundine, and a second from Councilman Merrill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero.
Mayor and council, this would be added to the resolution that Mr. Becker is going to be doing for a budget amendment.
All right, and then, uh, where are we at here? Case seven, considering a request for proposals for the interior roof of the BMX facility.
Hope you guys aren't sick of me yet.
Never, never.
Oh, let me just pull up my, thank you.
Thanks for coming to Shakira. If you guys don't know, I mean, our park board that we have right now too, is we're all talking all these park, park things, we've got an excellent park board, I mean, they really pay attention, they're, they're, they're awesome to work with, so, yeah.
Okay, after performing our annual facility inspections, which we do every year, um, and through the completion of the new exterior roof of the Isani Indoor Arena, which we briefly discussed earlier tonight, um, there were, it was observed by, not only through that inspection, but also through, um, BMX, that there were a number of loose and missing bolts- that there were a number of loose and missing bolts on the interior roof of the Isani Indoor Arena. So when the roof was replaced, it was actually redone on top of the existing roof, so the interior roof is still in place structurally. So it gets to be kind of confusing, so that's what we're calling it, the interior roof, the entire time, because we do not wanna touch that exterior roof at all, right? So, um, so after learning that and the initial findings from the report attached, um, it warranted further inspection. So after additional investigation inspection of the interior roof, it was determined the integrity of the structural components were not compromised, but that the bolts would require tightening and replacement for the building to remain safe for all users and that all bolts in the roof would need to be inspected individually to ensure they would not become loose. Andy Schrader from Rum River Consultants has been working through this process with us, um, with the city and the first cost estimate we received was eighty thousand dollars and was high enough that a formal RFP process was what staff thought would be best, just because we didn't want it to go any higher. Um, but we also, um, wanted to make sure we were getting the best quotes since it's such a unique situation. Um, the work involves tightening all bolts according to the manufacturer's specifications and replacing any missing bolts that have loosened and fallen out. Bolts will be tightened according to the manufacturer's specifications and will be inspected by the building official. The process is estimated, estimated to take approximately two weeks and will require Rum River BMX to halt operations during those repairs. The city will work with them, and I've already discussed this with them, um, to ensure the work is not scheduled during large or pre-planned events, um, but will require the cancellation of some practices during the weeks. The city engineer did review and we did get back his comments, um, from when the packet was originally posted and did say that they did recommend referencing the Torque Tension Reference Guide, which is now added as Exhibit B, as well as Loctite being used on each of the nuts, um, according to the manufacturer's specifications for that and for the size of the nut and bolt. So this is really to approve the RFP, um, to move forward so we can get some quotes as these, these are, could be all over the place. It really depends since.
One thing I'd like to add, if I could, Mayor Council, is that we did ask, um, Mr. Schrader to go through all of our old documentation, our old inspection forms and reach out to the original, um, structural company that built that building to see if they would honor any warranty or if there was proof that that was done or not done. Um, so we did vet all that through, unfortunately it led us to a dead end and we did not get a response and it technically is not under warranty, but we thought it doesn't hurt to ask, so a letter was sent.
This is just going off for RFPs to get a price on doing it and then see why we have to have a lengthy discussion, it's gotta be done, it's better than having a roof falling on somebody.
We can have a lengthy discussion after we get the, the, uh, proposals.
Anywhere near that, man, we could, maybe we just do that ourselves, it's not, it doesn't take rocket science, it's you, you get a torque bar and an impact wrench and you set it, you, you get the torque bar to what it needs to be and there you go. You don't even ha, you don't even have to check the torque, you just use a torque bar right on your impact, so.
I, I did discuss, we did discuss that actually through this whole process and, um, Mr. Sylvester did say that he does not think at this point during any of this upcoming season that they'll have time.
I mean, we did just get a new boom.
That's what I'm, yeah, we have it.
As well as the equipment.
What? I was thinking the same thing, eighty thousand dollars to go tighten some bolts? Hours of labor.
We'd have to send somebody up there.
That's a lot cheaper than eighty grand.
I get that, one thing I do wanna mention is I don't wanna highlight that number too high as, we don't want people to necessarily use that as their benchmark number. When that number was provided, there was a lot of unknowns at that time, so I don't want that to be.
Okay.
I make a motion to send it off for RFPs.
What is, what are the requirements on that to submit for that RFP? I mean, do you have?
We put the proposal date as due as October twenty-first and the proposal requirements are with just, it's a pretty short RFP because it's an RFP for quotes and not going out to bid.
I mean, as a contractor.
It's an all-in-one, we're asking for one lump sum for the whole project cost, um, that if there's a bolt missing, they will replace it. They will tighten any loose bolts, they'll use, as she mentioned, um, Loctite torque if necessary to the specifications. And we're looking for timeframe, um, if they will warranty their work. So if the, um, which is a yes, no, and then please explain, because if they, it could be challenging for someone to warranty work that wasn't theirs originally, but yet some might be willing to come back and retighten them if they become loose in five years. We don't know what contractors are willing to do, so we left that at their discretion, but to let us know and we will take that into account when we go through all the proposals.
Do you have any idea roughly how many bolts are missing and what size most of them are? Uh, that, my iPad isn't loading, it keeps kicking me out, so I can't look that up.
That I do not know and the, and the plans and specific.
It just showed some.
Yeah, I saw the pictures.
Yes, it didn't, and it didn't identify it specifically in the original plans and specifications, like the exact size, cause of when Jason even reviewed all the documents we had, it didn't call out that. So he just said according, that's why we said, that's why he gave that entire chart of torque, because depending upon the size, if there's, assuming a variety of sizes throughout the building, then we were covered. So that's why he wanted, and to use Loctite according to the manufacturer's specifications for the size of the bolt nut as well.
Does a contractor have to be licensed with any sort of special company to do this? Or could any Joe Schmo with any sort of contractor license put in a, a bid on this? Because, I mean, for that kinda money, you go rent a lift and you bang it out a couple of weeks and it's a heck of a paycheck.
It doesn't require any specific, special specifications or certifications to do this, a general contractor could do this, um.
However, they do need to carry liability insurance unless the city by Isani is additionally insured.
Correct.
Million dollar policy.
Luke's contracting. Oh, that's kinda why I'm asking here, because this is easy stuff.
So, I mean, it's, they went up there and looked at it and close enough to know that there's actually like a lot of them that are loose?
Yes, they did a very thorough inspection, um, there's multiple ones that are loose. Um, you can see it in, in, um, Mr. Schrader's report, um, here.
My, your, your tablet's not working either, yeah.
But they did do a thorough, like, test throughout the structure and multiple are loose. Multiple ones are falling out, they've had some fall out.
So are we talking two percent, fifty percent?
They have to check all of them.
Yeah, all of them need to be checked, but we were fortunate enough that Ebert's, when they were working on our roof, they did at no cost, went up there, cause you need to go over the, the track, can't take just a, you know, depending the lift that you need to have, it makes, you have to have the arm to articulate it or whatever. Um, and they were willing to look at some of them and allow, um, some of our guys to go up there and take a look as well to kinda get the, grasp the situation, so.
When was that building built?
Two thousand.
Started in two thousand fourteen, it was completed, I believe, in two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, I think we're gonna find a lot more once they start digging into it.
They probably never use Loctite.
And you can't call the contractor, did it?
That's a skip, that's just, they just skipped a step for us.
You sent them a letter?
They tried multiple ways to contact them anyway they couldn't, could not.
That is true, it happens every time.
Anyway, I made a, I made a motion.
Anybody, anybody wanna second that motion? Yeah, we're just going off for bids at this point, so it's not.
We're going out for proposals, yes.
Oh, yeah, sorry, proposals.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Holmgren, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K eight, consider a snowmaker for the sledding hill.
At the most recent August twenty-seventh Parks and Recreation Board meeting, um, we did share that the staff had contacted Wild Mountain, um, to see if there was any used snowmakers and recommendations. And I just wanna give a shout out to our Parks Assistant, Jessica, because it was her who contacted them and, um, asked a lot of the right questions and found a lot of the good information and she's been great, so. But, um, they did recommend, they didn't, we first asked a few questions, um, would you allow us, would you wanna donate your snowmaker for us, for a sponsorship? Um, or do you, would you let us use one or can we buy a used one from you? Lots of questions, right? And, um, they did not have a used one, but he did give a lot of great recommendations and said that for what we're using, the cost of what they use for a large snowmaking operation like they have to do is probably over the top and would cost us a lot of money just because of the, um, snowmaking, um, liquid that they use and they have to use. So to avoid that, he just suggested these specific snowmaking machines and said if we purchased five of them, potentially that would probably, and even on a low pressure, regular household pressure air com, pressure washer, um, that would be sufficient to our needs to see the amount of snow that we would want for the sledding hill. And so after bringing this forward to the park board, um, they were sure, it, the cold front is what they're called, the snow guns that were recommended are roughly just under a thousand dollars apiece, plus add-ons, um, and then also shipping costs, um, which aren't in that number. There's an image attached, but, so they weren't comfortable with purchasing five at this time as well as the, um, pressure washing machines that would be necessary also, which aren't included in this price. But they did say, they don't see that as a priority at this time, just because they're not sure what winter's gonna do. It's not every year we don't have snow, um, so that was their consensus, but they did say they recommended maybe trying two or three at first, um, and having a smaller investment and seeing how it goes, um, but.
I think that, I think Public Works has a pressure washer they had bought for the other one that we did. They have their compressor, so it's, it's mainly just getting the guns.
I thought, didn't we do something similar to this in the past already?
Yeah. It was a, it was a.
It was, it was not with a purchased gun, it was one that we tried to make ourselves.
Okay.
It was kind of a.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, I mean, years when you don't have the snow, I mean, it's not like we're talking about probably doing the whole si, hill with snow. We're just talking, cause it, so many people use it when we do have the snow, that it wears down a path of dirt, you know, right down the center of the thing and then, you know, it's kinda, you know, if it's looking to really fill that section.
When we get a big snowfall and it's windy, it blows it right off that hill at the top and really takes it and puts it down at the bottom, so.
It's amazing how many people use that hill, it's just crazy.
Popular, it really is.
But I think this has been a.
Some of the best money we've ever spent.
And it's, but it's been an ongoing situation to haven't used it because of lack of snow on it. Facing salts and the sun is hard on it, I, 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 I don't, I don't see us any problems getting two or three of them at that cost.
Like you said, you already have, you know, a pressure washer, no, I don't know how many pressure washers we have now that would.
I know we have one, I believe, at least for that situation, but I'm not sure how many either, so we'd factor that into the cost.
If it's big enough, you might be able to wire it, I don't know what sort of rating it's got.
Matt, Matt would know more about it and I think you can, he could, I think he got one of, he got those, got that pressure washer at a pretty screaming deal too, so, I don't see it, I, I, I think we should, like I said, it's been an issue and I, trying to cake something to make snow and if it's gonna be a three thousand dollar investment and he has to get another pressure washer, that cost is gonna be minimal.
I, I agree a hundred percent, can't, can't we use dedication funds for this? It, it's all new. Then, then why don't we buy at least three guns or why don't we get a new power washer and whatever you need? So they got a setup that will last for many, many years.
What's the useful?
One thing that, 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 that hill gets, there's tons of kids every time I drive by it.
Do they think they needed, they suggested we needed five of them for what we wanted to do though?
That is what the recommendation was from the, um, owner of Wild Mountain, so.
Do we have the water to supply to five?
We, yeah, we have the fire hydrant and we do have the hoses from Splush Splash, so.
I'm okay with five.
We've been talking about this for years.
I know, I think it, we could've used the last year.
I make a motion, we use park dedicated money, get five of them, see what Matt's got for pressure wa, pressure, you know, the pressure washer. That might be a minimal thing that he can just get at any time, whatever.
So do we have to have five Public Works guys running this at the same time then? Or are, or do you mount them on stands?
They're on tripods.
They're on tripods, they're set up and you can move them according to where you want the snow to go.
Okay, what's the useful life on these, do you know?
I do not know.
Like a nozzle on a pressure washer, so it's just gonna be replacing a nozzle.
Okay. I just questioned how well they work.
Well, if he gets, guy from Wild Mountain is saying this, and I'm, it's come from a pretty good source.
I'd rather start with three than five, see how it works.
But then you gotta mess around with moving them around, I mean, for an extra.
Yeah, but it might not even work for us, I don't.
I know, but if you're gonna, and I guess you could do that, but if he's saying they're gonna work, I mean, if he says you need five of them to cover the space you're trying to cover, I mean, this is a lot cheaper option than, cause I mean, it's an actual snow, used snow blowing machine was.
Yeah, they were around twenty thousand, thirty thousand, so.
This is a much cheaper option than what we originally even looked at, so.
Can use it for a Lumina Isani, if we don't have snow this year, give it a snow effect, I think, I think it's a great deal.
Yep, I make a motion, go ahead and order five of them.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Hement, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
And just to clarify, that's with, with the pressure washers that would be needed and all of the items that would be.
I think we need to see, he might be able to get by with one.
I'm not sure what he needs, but just to add to the motion that whatever is needed according to Public Works to make it work.
If we can, if we can roll four out of one pressure washer, I would rather we just do four type of thing versus if the fifth one is what, puts us over the top and you gotta buy another pressure washer, I, I guess I don't know where that would, what's that?
It's park dedication.
I agree with that.
You can't just blow it.
I also, but I'm not sure we'll be able to know that, we'll, we'll see what it can say, but I'm sure it depends on the pressure.
Right.
Value of the pressure washer as well as, it'll be a trial and error, I think, at first.
That motion carried five zero, did I say that already?
Yes.
Okay, and then you were wanting to clarify, but.
Yeah.
So yeah, I'd say, I mean, the intention was to get what they need in addition to the five guns to make the five work, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to K nine, consider Fairway Greens North Park Concept Plan.
Busy day for parks.
Yeah.
I don't think we've talked this much about parks in a long time.
I don't think so.
And we're almost over halfway gone with money.
Okay, Fairway Greens North, um, the city was dedicated a parcel on this, kind of on the south end of Fairway Greens North development, right as you enter the development and at the first intersection on Seventh. This, currently there's only one park that the city owns, which is Academy Park, but has limited access during the school hours because it's unavailable, it's, um, for the Arts and Science Academy use only during those hours. And as you know, we've seen a lot of development on the east side of Highway sixty-five. And so the concept is to create a natural playground with the parcel and include natural looking elements. And so here is the park, as you can see, it's right at that intersection, um, this is just a very simple layout because it costs, as we all know, a lot of money to get an architect to design these, so we didn't wanna move forward with that yet unless we knew what you guys wanted to see moving forward. And so this is a simple, um, art, artist rendition that Julia put together. Um, so some of the element ideas which are included within this budget concept that we, um, put forth is two tree decks, so, and one with a ramp and accessible path, so there'll be an accessible path of sidewalk that goes around the entire park and that's what you saw, that gray circle, um, and then two tree decks, um, of this size with net and other accessories for climbing, um, a gazebo for sitting and enjoying the park as well as two small teepees for kids to climb in, hollow logs, an embankment slide as well as a log maze. Total cost of the natural playground elements and the addition of a swing set is roughly thirty-five thousand dollars. The rough area footprint, um, is five hundred running feet of sidewalk starting at the road, which would, um, require a crosswalk from the sidewalk across the street at this time. Or an addition of another sidewalk to that corner, so it's whatever direction you'd like us to go in, um, which costs, costs roughly another twenty thousand dollars for that accessibility. We have fill for the area from the Bluebird Park Room, so we can make that embankment ourselves, um, using that dirt that we already have. Filling the area with either sand or wood chips, um, we, the park board originally discussed sand, discussed using sand, which we removed from a lot of our parks, but so that kids can play in it and use it for some of the stuff that we have out here to make it more of that natural park feeling. An off-street parking lot option was also in the layout, um, which we did have factored in as fifty to sixty thousand, um, just because all of the parking would be street parking, which we've dealt with and, um, the recommendation from the park board was to move forward with the park and they wanted to see that. the recommendation from the park board was to move forward with the park and they wanted to see that, but they said to potentially save the off-street parking until a later date, but to include it in the plan so that future park boards and councils knew what the intent was.
I would like to know, can we get by with doing that without having an architect involved?
I.
We don't have to have an architect involved, so that's why we did this, this fancy colorful rendition that.
This is, this one is actually reasonable. Look at all that fun stuff that you get for eight, seven percent of the cost of the other one.
Well, and it doesn't, it doesn't include any of the labor, and so depending on how that's looked at, we would go up for bids similar to what we're just looking at for the roof to see what that cost would be, so we'll have to factor that in and that's why we increased the cost.
I don't know if I'd like, I don't know about the gazebo portion. I think we could just put shaded areas up, could be a lot cheaper than gazebos, but that's my opinion.
I think.
They weren't very expensive.
It's not very expensive comparatively. It's roughly the same and just gives a different, different vibe. That's about what the shade structures are too.
My recommendation would be, let's get some pricing on labor installing it, so we all have a final number. I don't see any problem with going ahead with it.
I have a question about the parking lot. What is, is that tarred then?
Yes, that would be a paved parking lot, lot, which is what we require.
Require?
I would.
Yep, we require that within, throughout the city for all of our parking lots, for every business and every.
But we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to do the parking lot now. She's just saying if you did it.
I think we should put a parking area in there. It doesn't have to be tarred.
Yeah, it does. It's a pervious surface.
Let's break some rules. Well, let's, let's, let's say forty grand.
Not that we're making rules, but there's not a rule saying you have to do that.
How many changes would we have to make to have a?
None.
It could open up dirt. Well, if we had an institutional zoning district, it would be different. So throwing that out there again.
I think, I think, I think we should move forward with it, but I still think we need to get prices on what the labor is gonna put it on. We can't keep throwing this on Public Works to build this stuff.
Yeah.
You know?
So many hours in a work year.
Yeah. I mean, I, we could sit here and debate it all day long and I think you, let's look at it and if it's gonna, parking lot's gonna be fifty thousand and we'll see what kind of money we have left over after installing. We can always add the parking lot into it, but I think the parking lot is, I think it's the best idea to at least have it planned for it in there at this time.
And we can also, and maybe Finance Director Becker can speak on this, but through our pavement management process, we've added trails and other things and it's something that we consider too, to see on that pricing comes back for next year and decide if we want to do the parking lot, so just a thought, but.
Is the parking lot, is that something we can use park dedication funds for or no?
Yeah.
If it's part of the park, even if it's not equipped, okay.
Should we prioritize some of these things? Try to get as many of those items done with installation.
I think that's what they're all looking at.
Yeah, it includes all of these things, so two tree decks, one with a ramp and accessible pass, a gazebo, the small teepee, the hollow log, the embankment slide, and the log maze are included with, it's, I don't know if the whole list is on here. There's a boat that like kids can sit in that's wood, as well as a rope pull-up and the swing set also isn't on here, so an actual swing set.
It's gonna be really cool. I, I love the idea.
I, I like the, I like the.
And I love the price, yeah.
I like the, I like the idea that it's also handicap accessible. That's, I mean, that, we have to get more and more of that involved with our parks is the handicap accessibility. There's getting to be more and more of that.
That is the goal, to make it as much accessible. This is harder to make accessible just because of the groundwork that is going on, but at least with the path all the way around it, we're providing easier access to these elements.
What do you guys think, sand versus wood chips, or what do you, it was seven thousand for sand versus five for wood chips, I think?
Wood chips gotta be replaced all the time, but sand's gonna blow around. It's gonna be, probably have to add sand. I don't know. I like wood chips, but that's me personally.
And sand's not good for wheelchairs. Sand is not good for wheelchairs. They'll dig right in and be stuck immediately.
The other thing I'll say about sand and what we've had in some of our parks, like neighboring hills had big sand area. You get sandberries. It's like what grows in it is weeds and sandberries, so you have Public Works going out there tilling it to kill it because you get complaints about the sandberries from.
I think we go with the wood chips.
Okay.
We got plenty of wood to chip. Yeah.
This might be a good opportunity to say that we do go with Playground Safe certified wood chips. It's not regular wood chips.
What's the difference?
They're certified, so they're not getting splinters.
And larger pieces.
How much more is that?
That's the price difference.
Yeah.
That's the difference between sand versus wood chips. That's already built in.
Unless you want us to look into rubber.
No, that stuff's horrible.
All right, well, so I think you're just looking for direction on this one.
Yes, yep, this is just direction, so we'll go out.
You want to go out for pricing for installation and go with wood chips.
Would you like to see that through the RFP process, similar to this? So we'll bring back, bring forward an RFP?
Yes.
Yep, sounds good.
That's what we'll do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything on the consent agenda that?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thanks to Conexus for getting involved again and illuminate. That's, that's good.
Five thousand dollars.
That's awesome.
Yep, we need more of that hopefully. Hopefully it's coming.
Well, they should. It's electricity being used.
All right.
Yeah, for sure. All right, I had a motion from Councilman Lundin to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. We are adjourned and we'll jump into our committee of the whole here shortly.